We have less than a minute, Walter. Less than a minute. Okay, six o'clock. We all could stand for the pledge.
Walter, could you lead the flag, sir?
Our pledge to allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Read.
Do I have a nomination for a moderator?
Yes, I can nominate Mayor Bash, please.
Any seconds?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you for attending this notice of a special town meeting on May 24th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. In this meeting of electors and citizens qualified to vote in the town means in the town in Millford, which is being held currently here at Town Hall for the following purpose: To discuss in consideration of resolution to appropriate $10 million for costs related to paving, repairs and other improvements of the town roadways consisting of, but not limited to, milling and removal of waste materials, paving and materials, installation of manholes, and drainage risers, traffic protection including signage, and police and flag personnel. The appropriation may be spent for design, demolition and construction costs, equipment, materials, site improvements and landscaping, survey costs, architect fees, engineering fees, other consultant fees, legal fees, net temporary interest and other financing costs and other expenses related to the project. To authorize the issues of bonds or notes of the town in the amount not to exceed $10 million. To authorize the issuance of temporary notes of the town in the amount not to exceed $10 million in anticipation of such bonds or notes. And to authorize the mayor and the director of finance to determine the amounts, dates, interest rates, maturities, redemption provisions, form and other details of the bonds or notes. And to perform all of our acts which are necessary or appropriate to issue the bonds or notes and to perform all of our acts which are necessary or appropriate to issue the bonds or notes. To take such action to allow temporary advances of available funds, which the town reasonably expects to be reimbursed from the proceeds of borrowings. And to authorize the mayor and the director of finance to bind the town pursuant of such representations and covenants as they deem necessary or advisable in order to maintain the continued exemption from federal income taxation of interest on the bonds or notes authorized by the resolution if issued on a tax exempt basis. Including covenants to pay rebates of investment earnings to United States in future years. To authorize the mayor and the director of finance to make representations to enter into written agreements for the benefit of the holders of the bonds or notes to provide secondary market disclosure information. Which agreements may include in such terms as they deem advisable or appropriate in order to comply with applicable laws or rules pertaining to the sale or purchase of such bonds or notes. To authorize the mayor and other proper officers and officials of the town to apply for and accept federal and state grants to help finance the appropriation of the project. And to authorize the mayor, the director of finance, and other proper officers and officials of the town to take all of their action when necessary or desirable to complete the project and to issue bonds or notes and obtain grants to finance the aforementioned appropriation. This was dated in Millford, Connecticut, 14th day of May, 2021. Do we have any from the public that would like to speak concerning the $10 million resolution? Jack, could you say just a few words as our DPW director? Not to put you on the spot.
Just say your name for the record.
Okay, Jack Healy, Public Works Director. This is part of our ongoing road maintenance program. I think that you've all seen the progress we've made over the last few years. We again this year have already planned our roads. We've got about $6 million worth of roads that we're going to do this year. And then going forward, we're planning on $46 million of roads each year. We've laid them out for the next five years. We've already established a ongoing program. This is part of a road, it's a proactive road maintenance program. One that we, that we're working with the road committee. John Oaks is here from the road committee. And it's part of an overall Public Works program to make sure that the town of Millford's infrastructures is safe and up to, up to, up to date.
Thank you, Jack. And if I could ask John Oaks from our roads committee, if he could say a couple of words for those that will be watching or as this is going to be recorded as well, that we do have a process in place of which our DPW team works with our roads committee. I can't thank the roads committee enough for all the work you guys have been doing with our road infrastructure improvements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is, I think, the fourth year of... My name is John Oaks, 297 Monmont Road. This is the fourth year of our program to both refurbish and repair roads across the town. I think many people knew by the pothole test that the roads were in terrible shape. If you go back that long, now they're really coming into their own. As Jack Healy mentioned, we have a five-year plan. And that five-year plan will touch most of the neighborhoods in the town. And the process that we're using is the road committee, myself, John Whitman, meet with the DPW and the mayor every Monday. We review the progress of where the, what the roads, road work has accomplished for that prior week. We look forward to the following week as to what is supposed to be accomplished and then we feedback loop around to that the third week. So the processes work quite well. The relationship between the citizens on the road committee and the DPW has really gotten very close. And we're all sort of on the same page as far as the priorities for both road repair and for expenditures are concerned.
Thank you, John. And thank you again to the committee for all their hard work. Quickly also to our finance director, Greg Osipau. In putting in this anticipated approval for the $10 million, the authorization, does that meet your approval in doing your due diligence?
Yes, and frankly, interest rates are very favorable right now. So this is the perfect time to do any type of major infrastructure before interest rates turn against us. Borrowing costs are extremely low and we're the beneficiary of doing this.
Thank you, Greg. Have anybody else from the public that would like to come to public participation and opine on the resolution before us? Seeing that there isn't any, I would like to call about all those in favor of the resolution to appropriate $10 million for costs related to paving, repairs and other improvements of the town roadways. Signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Seeing that was unanimous, like to ask for a motion to adjourn? And I have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you, everybody. Thank you for attending. And for those that will be listening and recording, thank you. And our town council meeting will start at 7:00 PM tonight. Thank you. Yes, thank you. I don't know. What? A little juice. A little juice. Little cocktail. Vitamin E that you got.
You're running around. No, I didn't.
Awesome.
It stands one nation under God in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Science and living the armed forces. Thank you.
Well, you gotta get the list.
Oh, we've forgotten what's up.
Yes, I'm a little, I guess I'm a little rusty. Why am I rusty? All right, Lisa, I'm sorry, come on down. You. Lisa.
I got older in the past year, so I.
You look fantastic.
Oh.
Sure, maybe later. Right now I'm going to speak. Okay, I'm Lisa Agi. I live at One Murphy's Way in New Milford. And I just wanted to say that once again, we were overwhelmed by the love and support shown from this entire community. We held goat days as an event for the second time, interrupted by a brief hiatus with COVID. And it's still in its infancy, but we're forming a clearer picture of how to make it even better. We're grateful to all of the New Milford businesses that showed up, all of the new food trucks, people built creative castles. We had landscaping done. It was just such a great community event and so nice to see the smiles on the kids, you know. So anyway, and the good news is this year, as I said, we're trying to gel who and what we are. We have good news that we're able to get a bunch of people vaccinated with the state vaccine ban. And they'll be back June 13th to do their second shots for people who need it. And also, we totaled up and I counted all morning, the thousand singles that were in the jugs for donation from the attendees. So attendees, we had $3,500 in contributions that are going to the children's center this year. So I'm grateful to everyone who volunteered, helped, attended, and New Milford is the greatest of all towns. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the end of the list, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Walter. Katie.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll move to item number three, our consent agenda. Move to approve consent agenda, item three, A, B, C, D, and E.
Second. Any discussion on the consent agenda?
Yes, I'd just like to make note for the record that item D, the Milford Police Department is accepting a $1,250 donation from the hometown foundation. They did a K-9 fundraiser and this donation would be applied to the K-9 account. And the NMPD also received a K-9 ballistics vest for K-9 Mattis. He does not currently have one. And that donation was given by Mr. and Mrs. Adam Fritas through the Brady K-9 Foundation. And item three E, the New Milford Youth Agency is accepting a donation of $100 from the anonymous donor to be used for the mental health services. They are requesting that this donation be placed in the revenue account And that subsequent amount of $100 we place in the expense account, number 1044190058905.
And we have a second. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item number five would have been an update from Dr. Jeremy Levin, who could not be with us today. Mayor's comments, I'm sorry, I should have asked for the, do you want to do it now?
Sure.
Okay, sorry. Item number four.
Okay, so in speaking with our health director who could not make it this evening, Lisa Morrisey. The total number of confirmed COVID, oh, she is, or Lisa, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Okay, okay, I did not see you there. So the numbers that are in totality so far, so far as last March, the number of people that have had COVID-19, this is a no means passed currently, the state of Connecticut is at 317,562. The state of Connecticut is at three hundred and seventeen thousand five hundred and sixty-two. Litchfield County is at twelve thousand nine hundred and fifteen, that's up five from Friday. Hospitalizations for the full entire county of Litchfield is at one. And that's down three from Friday. New Milford is at two thousand four hundred and eighteen, which was unchanged since Friday. So that is great news as far as our town, as far as our state and our county. So that's all really great news. Vaccine count, first dose, we are at fifteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine, that's fifty-eight point nine percent. Fully vaccinated in New Milford is forty-seven point oh-nine percent. And these numbers are, have a lag time of about ten to fourteen days. And Lisa will be talking a little bit more, but I can't thank Lisa, her team, all of our volunteers, town employees for our New Milford Vaccination Clinic. Without that, we couldn't be anywhere near where we are today. So thank you for them. Also, this week, even though we are a little bit late, because it was last week and we didn't have a town council meeting, was Public Works Week. And I know Jack Healy is here and I'd like to present a proclamation, Jack, for National Public Works Week. So Jack, if you could come up, we'll come right over here.
Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure facilities and services that are vital in accordance to sustainable and resilient communities and to public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of the town of New Milford. And whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided, of the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, employees at all levels of government and private sector, we're responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest of citizens, civic leaders, and children in the town of New Milford to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works, the public works programs, and their respective communities. Whereas the year twenty-twenty-one marks the sixty-first annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore, I'd be fascinated to hereby designate the week of May sixteen through the twenty-first, even though we're a little late, Jack. This National Public Works Week, I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association, government agencies, and activities, events, and ceremonies designated to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees who recognize substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. Jack, thank you to your team for everything you do.
Also, I'd like to thank Lisa and Rick Aji, who are here tonight. They just spoke of help participation for a very successful goat, which is greatest of all towns, best town in the USA, New Milford, for this past Saturday and Sunday event. It was wonderful. Also, like to thank our Park and Rec's event director Laura Murphy for this past Saturday's Family Fun Day at Lynn Deming as well. Did a great job. Thank you to Laura and all of our Park and Rec team. Also, I stopped by this past Saturday as New Milford is the first town in the state to have a Connecticut youth cricket team.
Yay.
So I was able to stop up at Lynn Deming and watch them play a kind of quasi-team from Norwalk. So I'd like to thank Coach Jay and the entire cricket club for making the youth team a reality. And also, New Milford has its own adult cricket team, which plays up at Clatter Valley as well. So it's great to see those young men and women playing cricket. And it's great to see, from what I'm understanding, it's now the most growth-oriented sport in the world, cricket. So kind of amazing. Also, like to, the Senior Center is having this Wednesday, May twenty-sixth at one P M, outside under the tent. They're having conversations concerning COVID. And that is at one P M. So for those seniors watching, please come down to the Senior Center outside the tent. And you can talk about conversations with COVID. It's also on our town website, the Senior Center page as well for more information. Also, the New Milford Farmers Market now has been open for the past two Saturdays from nine A M to twelve P M. Been very successful. It's great to see all of our residents and those outside in New Milford come and help our local and regional farmers. Also like to thank Melody and Bill Devlin for the wonderful sign donations for Boardman Bridge. And that's in memory of Melody's mom, New Milford artist Fern Hack. So those are great tributes to Fern and also to the bridge. Also like to congratulate Matt Mariano for obtaining Eagle Scout, which is outstanding. It's wonderful to go to these port of honors, see how these young men, and we've also had the first, one of the first women that are Eagle Scouts now too in New Milford, to just see what they do and how they contribute to the community. It's amazing. So congratulations, Matt, for that. Also, for heads up, we're looking for young artists, New Milford, in the grades four through twelve. As we're doing our youth initiative, My Heart Beats For, which will be banners that will fly in August in our town green, on our town lamp posts. And basically, we're asking our artists, what does your heart beat for? And they're, which would be about what matters to you most. What do you want to protect, celebrate, or speak out about? For more information, you can check it out. We have it on our websites, What to Follow. And there will also be, I believe, a hundred dollar first prize, I think, Katie?
Yeah.
That the judges will be presenting. And we want to thank Ashani from the youth agency, also the Village Center of the Arts, the judges from New Milford Public Works, and Stephen Cass for all of their work so far on that. So that's awesome. I'd also like to thank New Milford, the police department chief Serrudam, and the men and women of the New Milford Police Department, as they had the volunteer team up to clean up, which was outstanding. And with their work on cleaning up garbage on the sides of the roads and the parks, they were able to pick up over four hundred and forty pounds of garbage. So outstanding. That was the first New Milford cadets project. So congratulations to them. As most of us already know, the budget was passed. I'd like to thank all of those residents that did come out and vote in this year's municipal budget. The voter turnout was low, six point four four percent of voters, but it was in line with pretty much the area. The town vote passed three to one. The Board of Ed budget passed two to one. I did hear from some residents that felt that they needed to have some more information when it came to budgets and other information on the town. And I heartily agree with them. So what we're able to do is purchase an additional subscription, it's not subscription, but a new kind of add-on to Connecticut CT Alerts. So currently with CT Alerts, we cannot go on and say, we're having a budget. It has to be for emergency use only. But the CT Alerts add-on that we got is going to allow us to do some. So we are in the process of training on that. So what we'll be able to do is either by voice or on your cellphone, you can get a text when you could come out to vote, when your road is gonna get done, what special events are happening in town. So we can have another way to reach out to our residents, to inform them of the wonderful things that are happening in town. So I want the residents of the town council to know. And we're completed with the training. It should hopefully be in another couple of weeks or two. We'll be unveiling that. So we'll make sure that you're able to opt in. This is an opt-in, opt-in agreement. So we make sure we follow all the national SPAM rules. So we're posting all that.
And Mayor, how would a resident opt in for that?
So we're pushing it out. You'll be able to opt in. You'll be able to click a hyperlink, as you would Connecticut CT Alerts, as you can right on our town website and on the New Milford Police Department website. You'll be able to do that as well. Opt in, really be able to opt in to get not only the emergency calls, but also be able to get these informative calls.
Excellent.
Next, roads, as Jack and his team continue on the roads that we have for this fourth year in New Milford. I kind of wanted to give you, council, a quick update on the roads. So currently, as I'm grabbing my paperwork with the fan. As of right now, paving has been completed on West Street, Dorset Drive, and North Valley Road. Drainage work is being completed on Dorset, North Valley, Vista, White Swan, and Gregory Drive. Draining work that's in process currently is Sawyer Hill Road. Road reconstruction work in process is Burnham. And I know they put, Jack, they put the binder down today, correct? It looked pretty nice. This, also, we're gonna be doing, Guerrero will continue drainage work this coming week on Sawyer Hill. Also, Connecticut Seal Putting will continue reconstruction work as well. So we're excited about that. The list of roads that we are going to be doing in this space, some of them I've already talked about, is West Street, Burnham Station, River Road up on the, on the side, Parcel, right, Jack? And in the middle as well, of course, there, it's a scenic road. Also, Long Mount Road up on the top portion, because we've done the other two portions as well. Riverview Road, Brown's Ford Road, Twin Ridge, New Bridge, Fox Ridge, Joffe, Dorset, North Valley, Vista, Gregory, White Swan, Woodridge, Sawyer Hill, New Preston Hill, Popular, Cobbler, Charter House, Brentwood Road. We're also going to be doing in the spring of this coming year, this next year, Squash Hollow and Wellsville. And the reason why we haven't done Wellsville yet, for those that drive Wellsville, like I do myself, you see Aquarian Water is there now. And they're digging up the road to put in a new water maze. So speaking to Jack and his team, we wanted to wait and let them finish it, let the road settle for the winter, so that we could do the proper course of action, rather than doing it this year, and they dig it up in less than a year.
Makes sense.
So we have the roadwork being done there.
Good plan.
As far as our roof projects, we continue on the town hall roof. Right now, the bidder has already been awarded, but we're actually waiting for the subcontractor, because subcontractor that they did have was going to be doing the wood restoration has dropped out due to COVID. And as we all know, all the projects that are going on, it's kind of tough getting subcontractor. So we're waiting for them to follow back with us, so we can start this project once they get their subcontract. The Milford High School roof, they had the walkthroughs, so they had a nice, how many was it, Jack? Seven or eight, I think, bidders was on that? Eight bidders. So Dean Petraselli, who is our architect on record, was very excited about that. I believe in a couple of weeks, might correct, Jack, that they'll be making their recommendation. And then we can get that New Milford High School roof project up and running. Library construction continues. For those that have seen, if you walk by there, you see the steel continues to be put up there. They poured the slab on the floor, and they continue to do wonderful work. I'd like to thank Councilwoman Frances for helping as we continue to monitor and work with the contractor and our clerk of the works as we meet with them weekly. The tentative date for completion is the third week in January, which would be a wonderful sight to see.
Certainly will.
We continue with the River Walk Phase Two update. For those that haven't seen it, on our Patriots Way Drive, all the way down to Youngsville Road. We put down, have we put down a top course, Jack, yet? So we just put the top course down. I invite everybody to go down there and look at it. Coming out very beautiful, and that will add on to the River Walk that it currently is on Youngsville Road. We'll then turn up into the downtown, to bring that connectability. We then will go to Phase Three, which we'll be putting down the, is it crushed stone, Jack, or? Stone dust. We're putting in native meadows, which will then attach to the sidewalks. That is at the Veterans Bridge, which then goes into the current River Walk, which then turns into the Phase Two that we're doing. We'll go all the way up into New Milford downtown, which will bring that total viability and connectability that we're all looking for as far as the River Walk.
How long will that be when it's all?
Jack, how long would that be? Two and a half months.
Right. Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, that's great.
Also, another thing too, which we're pushing out, was we had put in, for the budget was two, and then we had a grant that allowed us, I believe, to save a hundred thousand dollars on three additional DPW plow trucks that were sorely needed. Good news is, those three came in. So now we've gotten all the DPW trucks right back. So exciting news for that. And that helps us also take initial excess emissions off the road with these older vehicles, which is what the grant was, was helpful for us doing. And it also makes our team more efficient. Also, our hydro cedar came in. And what that hydro cedar does, it allows one guy to go, especially when we're completing with our roadwork on the side. Instead of having three or four guys come in and throw seed down and then throw hay down by hand, this machine comes in. One guy, or two guys, Jack. Two guys comes in with the hose, puts it down, don't need the hay, save time, save money. Kind of like the potlatch. So we got that. Also, the police, their three new cruisers came in as well. And lastly, Katie, Memorial Day parade's happening.
Right.
It's coming this, this Monday, week from today. So we're very excited about that. Thank you Commander McRiarty and Commander Delaney. Delaney for doing that. We will have our police helicopter and we'll have a flyover as well. So we're very excited about that.
Good to have.
And as Denise is here, we're also excited about Fourth of July. So July third evening, Fourth of July fireworks. So we're very excited about that. That's all I got, Katie.
Well, that was a lot, Mayor. That was a lot. You've got a lot going on. I can't wait to walk and see the cedar. Is that gonna be for rent?
I don't know, Jack, I think once we're done with it, we can ask some towns for, yeah, we could rent it out, make some money.
I think so. Sounds pretty cool. All right, so let's move on to item number six. Item number five, we'll skip over, Dr. Levin is elsewhere, helping the country stay safe. Item number six would be Health Director Lisa Morrissey. Do you have a COVID-19 vaccine response and update?
Thank you for coming tonight, Lisa. Sorry, I didn't see you over there.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having me this evening. Well, I think you stole most of my thunder with the numbers there. So as the mayor said, we have just under twenty-seven thousand people in the town. And by the state's records, just under sixteen thousand people have been vaccinated, which is about fifty-nine percent of the town has been vaccinated. And of the fifty-nine percent of people in the town have been vaccinated, that means either their first dose, not necessarily the second dose being completed, for fully vaccinated, meaning two doses of the vaccine or one dose of Johnson and Johnson, plus fourteen days, for about forty-seven percent of the town. Of the fifteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine people who were vaccinated in New Milford, just over eight thousand of those people were vaccinated at John Pettibone Community Center. So we're doing really well with that. Just over fourteen hundred twelve-to-fifteen-year-olds were vaccinated since the EUA came through for that. And I have to say how exciting that has been, seeing the family response. And for those of you who are sitting here or watching at home, it, you know, as a person who's at the center, we saw their parents and the grandparents come in over the weeks, and now we're seeing them come back with the kids. And I mean, the sense of camaraderie and the family spirit is really there, because, you know, I walked through the clinic, I'm like, didn't I just see you two weeks ago? And they're like, yeah, I was just here, but now, you know, it's my twelve-year-old's turn. So it really is fantastic to be a part of that. And I just, again, I know I say it every time, but I just want to thank all of the volunteers and you as council members, and you, Mr. Mayor, for all of the support, because we really could not have done this without everyone participating in that. That being said, I think we vaccinated just about everybody who is to get vaccinated. You know, we went just a couple of weeks ago, where we were doing about twelve hundred people on a Saturday, and now we're struggling to get two hundred people through the doors. Not because they don't want the vaccine, but because we've done such a great job in vaccinating people. So we're starting to talk about decreasing the hours of the clinic, and instead of operating three days, looking at one or two evenings a week, because we just, the demand isn't there. The timing of it, I think, is pretty good, because we got all of the big waves of people through the door. And we're finally starting to see penetration of the retail pharmacies coming on. So just about every retail pharmacy within twenty minutes of New Milford has at least one type of the COVID-19 vaccine. Many of them have two types of COVID vaccine available. So anyone who did not get vaccinated, even if they don't want, if our hours don't work for them, there's still lots of great availability in the community. So that's fantastic. And then now Pfizer just changed the storage and handling rules last week. So we're gonna see more pediatricians and family practitioners and internal medicine specialty groups starting to have the vaccine as well. So I think that the timing is just about right for us to do that. On the other side of that, we are waiting for this probably late summer, early September, we're gonna see that there's going to be another emergency use approval come through for the vaccines to go all the way down to two years old. So if you will, we're gonna take a little bit of a break this summer. So we're not disappearing. We're just gonna give our volunteers some well-needed time off, and then we'll be back at it. I've made the joke to our volunteers not to get too comfortable, because we'll be calling them back, and it'll be a very busy couple of weeks before school starts. So I think that's a good piece there. Looking at our case rates, I'm really happy with where the numbers have been. We've been seeing less than a dozen. Um, we've been seeing less than a dozen people, um, a week of getting COVID-19 as new cases, so that, that's really good news. I wish I could see more people getting tested, because that would make me feel a little bit better, but the numbers are looking really good. I hope that we continue to tread down. Um, again, I keep telling people, this is not the time to get complacent. So, uh, just a friendly reminder, where, where we were last year, the same time where we started to see cases dip down, we do have the added benefit of having the vaccine this time around. But last year we saw this lull, and then we saw cases pick back up around July 4th. So just remember, you know, I know that we're fifty-eight percent of us are, are vaccinated, but that doesn't mean that you still cannot get COVID-19. It doesn't mean that it's not in the community. So just make sure that if you're not going to be with people who are vaccinated, you're gonna be in large groups if you're taking appropriate precautions. Um, and if you, and, and you hear it with me, my allergies are really terrible. I've now been tested, I think, three times since my allergies have ramped up, because it really is difficult to tell the difference between, uh, allergies and COVID-19. So just make sure that if you do feel kind of crummy, that you are getting tested. So I think that's it for me, and I will, uh, give the floor back to you all in case you have any questions.
Chris?
Couple of questions. One, I know there's been talk about maybe needing a booster. Do we know anything more about that? And if we do need one, is it your intention to continue using Pettibone for that?
Yep. So, um, our intention is to continue to use John Pettibone. Um, the jury's still out on the boosters. It sounds like we're going to need the boosters. It's just a matter of timing. Um, so we're waiting to find out if that'll be the summer, which case our break will get cut a little bit short. Um, or if it'll be, you know, early fall, um, coinciding with flu vaccine season.
Great. Um, and that, on the, the change in the Pfizer storage rules, is that a change to the vaccine? Or they just know more about storing it, and they were overly conservative in the beginning?
Yep, they know more about storing it. So this is very similar to what we saw first with Moderna and with Johnson and Johnson. So, um, as we have it out more in the field and they do more field testing, because, you know, what happens in a laboratory is it's a very controlled environment. Once you push it out to the community, I mean, it really is the wild, wild west. So with the additional information that they have with so many providers, they felt more confident, um, in the storage and handling, meaning that the vaccine can be stored at lower, um, at warmer temperatures, if you will, um, and it can be held in a refrigerator longer.
Great. Thanks, Lisa.
Any other questions for Lisa?
I have a comment.
Katie?
Um, I'd just like to say, Lisa, that having been at all but one of the clinics, that you have done a wonderful job of keeping on top of everything, making sure that we have everything that's needed. And, uh, the volunteers, I mean, I speak for them as well to say, you've done a great job, and I know you're gonna continue to do a great job, because it's not over yet, but.
Thank you.
But thanks for a few weeks off.
Thank you.
And lastly, Lisa, I know Superintendent DeCorto put out a memorandum.
Today?
Today, I think it was this afternoon.
Yeah.
For the edification of the council, could you kind of update council on the mask requirements for children?
Sure. Um, so I'm sure many of you saw the update that the state pushed out at the CDC, and there's been a lot of confusion about when are we wearing masks? So where kids wear masks, and when is it appropriate? Um, so from now until the end of the school year, while the kids are actually inside the school buildings, they're gonna continue to wear masks as lo- as with the, the staff members. Um, when they're outside during recess, if they're outside doing sports, they're not going to be wearing masks. So that's keeping in line with the CDC guidelines as well, that when they're outside, we want them to, if you will, get a mask break. The whole state, um, so the state gave the option to schools to make a decision district by, by district, so it's a recommendation.
Like at a sporting event, it's up to that school whether they want people outside there masked or not.
I'm sorry?
At a sporting event, it's up to the school whether they want people masked or not.
That's correct.
Any other questions for Lisa? Lisa, again, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All righty. Uh, moving on to item number seven, I'd like to move to accept the, uh, following one-year appointments to the Lake Villanueva Authority. Uh, and re- as are recommended by the Lake Villanueva Authority Chairman, Shannon Young. Now, we, council members, you have an attachment with all of the names.
And Katie, we are, we also have, uh, in the audience, the chief of Lake Villanueva.
Great. I just want to know.
Concerning how they came up with the names, how that goes about, he's here to answer any questions that you may.
Fellow council members, do you want me to read the names?
Doesn't seem necessary.
I have that. Thank you. There's a whole page of it.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Thank you, Chief, for coming.
Thank you. Item seven B, uh, move to accept the following reappointment, uh, for municipal agent. This is a four-year term. It's for Leonardo Gio, and his term will be September twenty-sixth of twenty-twenty to September fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four.
Second. Any discussion on motions? We all know Leo is our current, one of our current municipal agents. And we have a motion at second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion, any? Thank you.
Okay, item number eight, uh, actually, uh, well, we have three of them separately. Uh, move to approve temporary closure of Main Street, the Southern crossover on Main Street, westbound portion to Bridge Street, Railroad Street, and Bennett Street for the setup, duration, and breakdown of the Memorial Day Parade, which will be approximately from nine AM to one PM on Monday, May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one, and this is pending traffic authority approval.
Let's table that.
I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Move to approve the, uh, road closure, uh, for the Milford fireworks celebration to be held on Saturday, July third, twenty-twenty-one. And that will be the Southern crossover of the Green Church Street to Bank Street from twelve PM until the fireworks end, uh, approximately four PM, uh, Bank Street from four PM until the fireworks end, which will be about ten PM. Ford Hill Road, Pigler Hill Road, and Town View Drive for the duration of the fireworks shoot. Again, this is July third, twenty-twenty-one, and there's a rain date of Friday. I think it can only be one day, whatever November twenty-seventh is. It says Friday, Saturday.
Probably Saturday.
I think it's Saturday. Okay, so that'd be November twenty-seventh, ooh, after Thanksgiving. Again, this is also pending traffic authority approval.
Second, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
And move to, uh, approve the closure for the Festival of Lights, the, uh,
Thank you.
That is gonna tell us some more to see. So I moved to approve the closure for the Festival of Lights, which is our tree lighting ceremony, which will be closing the Southern crossover of the green on Saturday, November twenty-seventh, from two PM to eight-thirty PM. Now, this is pending traffic authority approval. This is also the same day as the rain date for the fireworks. So should that occur, that'd be one celebration. Let's add a little bit of that in.
Any discussion on the vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
And anyone who's interested, either in the public, uh, listening, the Traffic Authority meeting is Tuesday, May twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one, tomorrow. If you wanna talk to them about anything.
You in the chamber for, again.
Yes.
Hosting fireworks and the festival lights. We can't thank you guys enough.
Gosh, can you imagine on the twenty-seventh, if the fireworks are happening and the tree lighting?
That might be a new idea.
I know, but it'll be greatest of, that'll be the greatest of all towns, like biggest tree lighting. Mayor, item ten is you. Uh, you want to discuss the recommendation from the study of benefits for first responder subcommittee?
I would like to ask the subcommittee, uh, that'd be Mr. Killa, Councilman Lawson, and Councilman Cosgrove, if they could, uh, give us an update on their findings from subcommittee.
And I'd like to make the motion that we, uh, approve their recommendations once we've heard them.
Second. Good evening, Mayor. Town council members, staff, and members of the public. For the record, my name is Tom Killa, nineteen Milford Drive, Chairman of the Volunteer Department, EMT Benefit Committee. It has been an honor to serve on this committee and serve with Councilman Chris Cosgrove and Dave Lawson from Minnesota. I want to thank our mayor, the mayor's office, the tax collector's office, the town clerk's office, the assessor's office, the personnel office, the finance office, and Jim Furlough of Waterwood Fire Department for all the help in providing pertinent information and documents that tremendously helped the committee in deliberations. As a community, we have always had and continue the dedicated firemen, EMT, and now CERT volunteers. As a community, we have been and continue to be extremely blessed to have the volunteers we have, where other communities are struggling with diminishing numbers of volunteers. New Milford remains strong. Currently, the town provides pursuant to Public Act nineteen dash thirty-six, a tax abatement benefit up to one thousand dollars per year. Also, the town provides pursuant to Chapter twenty-three of the Town Court of Ordinances, Section twenty-three dash two, funding for the firemen and EMT awards program, agreed to by the town for years twenty-nineteen through twenty-twenty-six. Those, those fundings that have been agreed to right up to twenty-twenty-six. The awards program is managed by the fire companies and the Milford Ambulance Corps and funded in the town budget. Qualifying tax abatement is done within each department through a point system. And it's, you could be going, you could be a member of the department, but you gotta show up to get qualified for points, to qualify for the abatement. You just can't come to the annual fundraiser and get the abatement. You gotta qualify into the point system. And they do that all internally, and they do a great job. Therefore, the committee unanimously and agreed to these recommendations for your consideration and approval as follows. Commencing on seven-one, twenty-twenty-one, a tax abatement increase from five hundred to one thousand. Commencing on one-one, twenty-twenty-two, a tax abatement increase from five hundred to one thousand. For a total tax abatement pursuant to Public Act nineteen dash thirty-six of two thousand dollars per year. That's the maximum that the statute allows the town to go. Also, a gas allowance for CERT volunteers for five thousand dollars. We have a lot of volunteers. It'd be good to give a guest card, uh, to help them along. This committee's findings is for your consideration. The CERT money recommendation would be a supplemental appropriation. The increase in tax abatement, I would say that because your budget's already approved, and I discussed this with our finance director, who's done a great job to see how the year goes in tax collections and revenue collections that are out over beyond what you expend for your budget, you put into your budget, anything beyond that would absorb that, that extra cost. So you, you could monitor that quarterly, rather than going through another supplemental appropriation, which is probably about a hundred and thirty-nine thousand. I would, I would look at the growth in, in your tax collections and other revenues that would offset that, neutralize it before the end of the fiscal year, ending, uh, six-thirty, twenty-twenty-two. That's the committee's findings, and we recommend that you consider it. We have a great volunteer system. Uh, I know all of you know that, and it's, it's time that this happened. I know the mayor has discussed this for several years now, and it's time to pull the trigger on this and get it done. Because we have, like I've said, and I know you all agree, and we all appreciate a great volunteer system. And without that volunteer system, the cost of providing the service would be exponential. Yes, yeah. I just scribbled some opious notes, so I could present. Okay, sure, sure.
Katie?
Tom, I would just like to make a comment, um, thanking you and Chris and Dave for the work you did on this, and all the people that helped you, every department in the town hall, I think you mentioned. But, um, and I'm happy about the abatements, but I will say I'm very happy that you're recognizing the contribution of CERT. And, uh, you know, I, I think something nice to do, you know, they work very hard. They come to every, they help at every single thing, the vaccination clinic, they're out there first thing in the morning, immune to heat and the rain, and whatever, we had a cold, that's a long, but they never, ever complain, and they're always there. And Jim Furlough is also always there.
That was a great job.
Yes, and I, I thank you for considering and helping them.
That's why it sounds like it could go for a gas allowance to qualify CERT members to help them.
Yeah.
Because if you look at, and then, and then the, uh, firemen and EMT, you know, that abatement, they also get a ten ninety-nine, they get taxed. They pay federal tax on this. They don't even get a hundred percent of that abatement value. Then if you look at what it costs them to communicate, go back and forth, that thousand gets dwindled down quite a bit. So increasing it to a two thousand dollar a year abatement would be a great thing to do. And, and it'll show the town appreciative of it is of all its volunteers.
Great job.
I get a senior citizen discount if you do my taxes next year. Of course. Thomas, you're on. Okay. Uh, the, it's unfortunate the government taxes in its revenue and, uh, what are you gonna do? So they, they take it as an abatement, so they tax you lower currently by that thousand. But they pay a thousand on their, on their income side, so they're not getting that whole thousand. So increasing it to two thousand effective January one, I'm sorry, July one, twenty-twenty-one. I did it in half to get the other thousand, because they already get five and five, split up. But it brings the total abatement to two thousand dollars a year.
Any other questions for Tommy and subcommittee? Chris and Dave?
I just have a, a comment. Um, so, uh, it was a pleasure working with Councilman Lawson and Chairman Villa. Uh, he volunteers all over his town.
I'm waiting. Our name? At eight o'clock in the morning.
Before breakfast, his historical knowledge of, uh, what's going on here, the statutes. Uh, we were able to, to do this in, in two meetings, uh, and largely because of the hard work of, uh, Councilman Lawson and Chairman Villa. And, uh, and the main thing is, I think we all want this, you know, just to show the, the great appreciation we have for our volunteers, so, so. Thank you. It was a pleasure.
Hey. Yeah, uh, and I think as, uh, Mr. Villa reported, a lot of our actions were restricted by statute. And, uh, that really handicapped us in, in, uh, what we could do. But on the other hand, it made it rather easy, but, uh, uh, so one without the other. Uh, another comment I'd like to make, although it wasn't our purview with this committee, uh, it came up, uh, actually, the town council level and within the subcommittee, uh, about our department head salaries, and taking a look at those a similar fashion to bring those up to speed. I mean, last time, it wasn't a town council, but I'll ask many of you, when's the last time we looked at the non-bargaining unit salaries? Yeah, it's gonna be a decade or so easily. So in comparison with other towns, just on a cursory, just a cursory, in comparison with other towns, we're lacking. We're, we're really, really lacking. So, Mr. Mayor, I, um, humbly request that you entertain the idea to form another subcommittee to be charged with taking a look at some of the salaries that we have on bargaining unit heads and bringing them up to speed as best we could.
Makes a great idea. Uh, Dave, we'll put it on the next.
It's a deadline. It's been as old as so.
And, uh, we'll put it on the next agenda for the next council. And, uh, if any other council members would like to be on the subcommittee as well, you can, uh, let me know as well. I can't thank the three of you enough for all your work, especially with this, uh, first group, with first responders, because they absolutely are doing everything.
We're blessed as a community. Like, I can, I can't agree with you. We're, we're, we're past due, I'm looking at that.
Oh, yeah.
Non-bargaining units, I agree.
So we have a motion and a second?
Yep. Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Tom, thank you, Dave, thank you, Chris.
Item eleven, uh, I'd like to move that we approve the adoption of the annual fair housing resolution, which council members, you all have a copy of that.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
I'd also like to move to call a public hearing for Monday, June fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one, at six-fifty to receive comment on all New Milford community organizations' applications to the twenty-twenty-one Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act program.
Second, thank you, Walter, and this for, uh, of the council's edification, this usually is awarded to the culinary school, because they apply for this. We're also asking other community organizations to take a look and apply as well. We had a motion and a second, any discussion? We had a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Not, yeah, it's not against, it's just that it's an amazing tool for, for corporations to use that, you know, encourage any of your nonprofits to apply for, because it gives you the ability, I think it's like sixty percent write-off for the donation, where you get that back as a credit. So I mean, you donate, let's say, ten thousand, you really get about eight thousand dollars back from the government because once you count the federal and other things, it's an amazing tool, and it should be utilized a lot more than our accounts usually.
And may I ask how, to publicly note, how a organization would apply for this?
Um, I don't know, gone does it? I have no idea how they, they apply.
Would we reach out to the mayor's office for this?
Yeah, and we'll have Tammy push out where you can get the hyperlink, and we'll put it on our table.
Great, great, okay.
Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
And item eleven C, I'd like to move to authorize the mayor to sign the application to the Department of Economic and Community Development State Historical Preservation Office Historic Preservation Enhancement Grant, H P E G, for a historic district walking tour and consideration of the following resolution.
Second. Any discussion?
I didn't read it yet.
I know, but.
I know what it is. I, you're, I know, I know, right, right. Well, just for the townspeople, it's resolved that Pete Bass, mayor of the Milford, is authorized to sign and apply for the Department of Economic and Community Development State Historic Preservation Office for the Historic Preservation Enhancement Grant on behalf of the town. Mayor Bass is empowered to execute and deliver in the name and on behalf of this corporation a certain contract with the state of Connecticut, Department of Economic and Community Development, and to affix a corporate seal, if any.
Ms. Katie, second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Thank you.
Thank you. Item twelve is a update from our finance director.
Good evening, everyone. I was going to talk about the town's budget, but the mayor stole my thunder. But I will say, this budget process was absolutely the smoothest budget process I've experienced in my thirty-three years in municipal finance.
Happy weekend, hell.
The town received the final, their final ECS payment from the state. It was ninety one thousand nine hundred twenty one dollars less than expected. The state does this when the Board of Ed receives more funds in the excess cost revenue category. Expenditures on a cash basis are at seventy seven point three percent of budget. On a straight line basis, they would be expected to be at eighty four point six percent. Salaries are within budget. All town departments are within the straight line expenditure pattern. Revenues are at ninety eight point two percent of budget. Taxes overall are at ninety eight point five percent of budget, with current taxes as of April being collected at one hundred percent. Aging youth agency, fire marshal, and parks and recs revenue are still lagging. Most other revenues are at or above budgeted amounts. Overall, on a cash basis, expenditures total eighty million five hundred four thousand eight hundred eighty-two dollars and fifty-four cents. Revenues total one hundred one million eight hundred ninety-five thousand eight hundred eighty-three dollars and nineteen cents, leaving the town with a positive cash flow of twenty-one million three hundred ninety-one thousand one hundred ten dollars and sixty-five cents. Questions?
Any questions for Greg?
Remarkably well. One overtime line that is over budget is public works, non-winter overtime. However, they were under in their winter overtime, so it balances.
Well, they've been a lot of roads during the summer.
Yeah, so no, overall, all budget, all departments' budgets are within the straight line.
So they're actually the same. I'm talking for the fiscal year, so you're.
Again, yeah, right now, their, their non-winter overtime's over budget. Their winter overtime is under budget. Oh, yeah, yeah, they have two categories here. Yeah.
Chris?
The ECS shortfall. So run that by me again.
All right, we got our final payment, of which I was expecting a certain amount of money. It was short by ninety one thousand and change. The state does that when the excess costs that are given to the Board of Ed are more than normal. I, I'm, go ahead. Would you like to address that?
Yeah, it, it's, it's very frustrating, because we do our budget before the state does theirs, which is a whole nother issue. What happens is, basically, there's one pot allotted for the whole state. Ten million dollars, let's say. And everybody competes for that amount of money. Now, when they say excess cost, what they're talking about would be, for example, a special program for special needs. Think of it as a deductible. Okay, usually it's around fifty thousand dollar, sixty thousand dollar deductible that the school would have to eat up. It gets even better. After that, with this money that's set aside and divided up. Okay, so you, we still have the other fifty percent that we're hoping to get. You may or may not get that, because, again, everybody is competing for that. So instead of, which makes his job impossible, by the way, you may only get thirty percent of that other fifty percent that you need. You might get the old shot. It's a, it's really a difficult thing to work out. It would also depend on the amount of services that qualify for excess cost and things of that nature. So it really gets to be complicated. You throw it into a budget like this, and you gotta make a prediction. You, you just have to do it. But think, I think you pay your deductible, and the quote, insurance company may or may not pick up the rest of the tab, which means you might have a higher deductible.
So so we, we met our budget though, right? And, but we got shorted.
No, see, the excess costs are budgeted on the, on the Board of Ed's side of the budget.
And we know how much they.
They, they raised two hundred eighty-five thousand more than what was budgeted. So I'm, I'm going to sit down and discuss this further with the business manager. Now, Dave, perhaps you can answer this. Hopefully, how does the town budget for the excess costs? Is there a formula, or does the state tell you how much you're going to get?
The state does, yeah.
And I don't understand why they give us more than what we budgeted for, and then the town gets penalized on the ECS side of the.
Well, I'd love to explain that, but I can't.
You can. All right. Okay. Fair enough, fair enough.
Been doing that for a long time. Again, it, it's a very frustrating formula.
Frustrating.
It hasn't really been looked at in years, which I think it should be, myself. And I know there was a going, there was more money put into education by a committee, got taken out, put back in. So these are the things that we're dealing with. But again, when we have, I have to make our budget, and then the state comes out with their slate, you know, sometimes it works out, sometimes it doesn't.
So I know for ECS, there's no formula that the town does. We're pretty much dictated by the state how much money they're going to give us. And, you know, we rely on that number. And then I, I just, I find it very frustrating that the state who is controlling these payments can do something like that.
It almost seems arbitrary.
It almost seems arbitrary.
Basically, it's.
But nevertheless.
Yeah, what happens is in their budget, as I said, they could argue, say, ten million, exactly, much more than that. And then you have everybody competing for it. That's where you get.
There's no formula.
There is a formula, but.
But they control the formula, not the town.
Correct.
One other question, Greg. You mentioned the positive cash flow we have. Do you care to make a prediction now where we might end up the year?
No.
Answer to your. Just thought I'd ask the question.
Good answer.
Yeah, good.
Any other questions for Greg? Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, Greg.
Good job.
And moving on, the final item thirteen, an update on economic development from Mayor Bass.
Thank you, Katie. Just a very brief first, thank you to Miguel and his family, a new business that opened up, the Milford Deli on Forty Danbury Road. Excited to have them. He owns three other delis in the area. There's a lot of experience. Very good foods, if you get a chance. Pretty good. Try it out. Where the old cobblestones used to be. So we appreciate that. I'd also like to thank Lisa, I don't know if she's still back there. So Lisa, we had a Zoom call with all the businesses. It was also recorded. Talk about the new COVID guidelines, when Governor Lamont's orders had changed and some had fallen away. So he wanted to explain to the businesses what is their right as a business, what they can do about wearing masks and not wearing masks. I'd like to thank Lisa for being on that call, so we were able to talk to the businesses about COVID response and the new guidelines. So thank you, Lisa, for being on that call. Also, I came down kind of in a side for the council. I spoke to Rick Moro, Morio, he's the general manager of Rings End. And that's a business that has a lumberyard, it does windows and everything else. They've been around for many, many decades. Rick is getting ready to retire next month, so congratulations, Rick. Met the new manager, but the thing I thought was really interesting when talking to him, I asked him, I said, Rick, can you give me kind of an idea of how busy you are compared? He said, Pete, this is the busiest we've ever been. And I said, busier than like two thousand and two, two thousand and three, you know, back into the late eighties, nineties. He goes, it's the busiest we've ever been. So they're kind of a bellwether when you're talking about real estate, you're talking about renovations, and real estate drives the economy. We see that. That's a very good sign for the future. In speaking with Bill Murphy, our building inspector, he again touts the same thing. He's seeing continued strength in permits and applications and inspections. So that's all good news for New Milford. Same is with Laura, let's talk to Laura Reagan, our zoning E, our Z E O and our planner. And zoning is continually having continual requests for permits and conditional instructions. These are all very good news, all good signs for New Milford. Kind of a headwind that I think has, what's not in our control at all for New Milford, but kind of headwinds to kind of watch is inflation. Inflation does happen to kind of rear its head a little bit later, maybe a year, year and a half out. It's something that we need to be cognizant about. But so far, it's great to see. Listening to businesses, especially in the restaurant industry, are very excited about the summer. We were able with the guidance from the governor to continue on with our outside dining, which the restaurants love, the patrons love it. The ability for the restaurants to go even over a hundred percent capacity, which they truly need, especially to make up for the revenue losses that they've had this past year. Talking to a lot of the small, unique shops, they're very excited about this year, very happy and enthused. I know Denise can kind of vouch for that as well. It's just a lot of pent-up demand. It's within the market. We're seeing that. I think that's going to play out as we move forward throughout the summer and fall. So that's pretty much all I have, Katie.
That sounds good.
Thank you. Dave?
I'd just like to point out with the building permits being up, and I think one of the reasons they can keep up with it is because you can apply online now.
Absolutely.
And that streamlines a lot of work for, well, it eliminates a lot of work, let's put it that way, so that we can keep up to a degree the demand that they have, but that certainly helps in doing that and with their scheduled appointments, etc.
Absolutely. When we first came in, we took on the view permit, and there was some, a little trepidation by some of our employee base, but now they absolutely love it, as Zach were saying, they can just, as Bill was telling me, he's like, I'm seeing payments come in Sunday night from a contractor, wanting to get busy with their work. So I think harnessing technology has been a great attribute, especially when it comes to this permit.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Any other discussion?
Just that it's going to be a great Memorial Day parade.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight.